I would like to call this meeting to order. A joint meeting of the Somerset School Committee, joint with the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee, on its Tuesday, November 9th at 6:32 2021. You know, it's been posted. Pursuant to the open meeting laws, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made when perceived or unperceived by those present. We have with us today SATV Comcast Channel 15, which this will be shown in the next few weeks. Roll calls, remember, present K-8, Mr. Mashad.
Present.
Mr. Goddard, here. Mr. Gore.
Here.
Ms. Gary.
Here.
And Mike McDonald, the chair, is here. We also have with us Superintendent of Schools Jeffrey Schoonover, Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Ron Taro. Exclusively, we have Ms. Negastin, Director of Special Ed. And we also have Rob Macaulay, Recording Secretary. For the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee, pursuant to the meeting law, any person may make a video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made whether perceived or unperceived by those present. Attendees here, Ms. Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Gore.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Mashad.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Ms. Vincent.
Here.
And Lieutenant Secretary. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. United States of America, and the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would, yes, of K-8, would like to extend motion to go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 2182. Conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and the CHISO declares Jeffrey Schoonover, Superintendent, Ronald Taro, Director of Business and Finance, Ms. Negastin, Director of Special Education. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 2183, conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting law may have, or open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the CHISO declares American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Cafeteria, and Paraprofessional Units. The committee will return to open session. So vote, second. Roll call, vote. Mr. Mashad.
Aye.
Mr. Goddard.
Aye.
Mr. Gore.
Aye.
Ms. Gary.
Aye.
And I, Mike McDonald, votes aye. Okay, on behalf of region, I would like to motion to the executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 2182, conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and the CHISO declares Jeffrey Schoonover, Superintendent, Ronald Taro, Director of Business and Finance, Ms. Negastin, Director of Special Education, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 218C, conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the CHISO declare American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Cafeteria, and Paraprofessional Units. So vote, second. Okay, we move to second. Aye. Those in favor, Ms. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Gore.
Aye.
Ms. Kennedy.
Aye.
Mr. Mashad.
Aye.
Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Ms. Vincent.
Aye.
And we will have an open session tomorrow. K-8, I would like to extend motion as behalf of Somerset School Committee, accept a memorandum of agreement between the Somerset School Committee, Ashtone Cafeteria, run since February 1st, 2021, and July 31st, 2024, as presented. So vote, second. The motion made by Mr. Mashad, sent by Mr. Goddard, any discussion? Okay, any discussion, roll call, vote. Mr. Mashad.
Aye.
Mr. Gore.
Aye.
Goddard.
Aye.
Ms. Gary.
Aye.
And the Chair, Mike McDonald, votes aye. Thank you. Right now. Okay, on behalf of the Somerset Regional School District, I would extend motion as behalf of the Somerset Regional School Committee to accept this memorandum of agreement of agreement between the Somerset Regional School Committee and the Ashtone Cafeteria, run since February 1st, 2021, and July 31st, 2024. So vote, second. Motion, second. Those in favor, Mr. Mashad.
Aye.
Mr. Gore.
Aye.
Ms. Kennedy.
Aye.
Ms. Vincent.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. I would want to, an overview of a formative assessment.
Sure. You have a document in front of you that essentially reviews and highlights information that I shared with you. I think it was in a meeting, sometimes it was in a conference. So at that time, I created one of those online live monitors reporting walking through my various goals as well as report standards for superintendents, providing a reflection, a summary evidence along the way for that sort of inside check-in. So rather than providing all that information back again, I just tried to highlight some of the aspects of the information that someone presented back then. I don't know if you had time for review or if there were some additional questions that it would be really necessary to go back through and re-discuss all the things I had presented that first time, unless you would want to.
Well, I think, as I say, from my perspective, I admire that five we did that earlier, trying to ramp through a lot of that, and then kind of pile up what's came with this. But, of course, a lot of time, people pressure, and contain a lot of things.
Are there any areas, Mr. Schoonover, that you feel? Because the evaluation period is kind of extended and brought over to each area. Any areas, and we, when, I know, because I'm not committed to design these goals, they were meant to be multi-use. Are there any goals that have been identified? You talked about what your goal is going to be, where you see you may need more time to achieve the results that we're looking for.
Well, because this is a, this is the mid-cycle check-in, the goals at this point, we identify at the end of this school year. Is that accurate?
Right, yeah.
In June? At this point, I don't know if any of those will be extended on into another year. I have the work that we have regarding diversity, equity, and food. It'll be something that's, social-emotional learning is something that we are continuously learning on. Finalizing the strategic plan is something that will be achieved by the end of this school year. Communication, particularly through COVID. I mean, there was, it kind of shifted, but there's always something that I want to focus on. And the last goal was a good one, it began administrative, principal, leadership, and supervision. So that is, maybe, that might be another one that I can take in for example. I'll have to see where we are at the end of this school year. But certainly, there's always, the work is always in progress. I hate to say that, you know, unless there was something like a strategic plan where there is a culminating component to it, other than that, the work is always being done. Might shift from my priority area to something else, but it still happens. If that makes sense.
No, it doesn't. I think you can continually work off the idea, but you've established that as kind of a focus.
Yeah.
So to show the steps that you've made within the district and to achieve increased learning and even awareness in that area.
Right. That's important to learn, because you might see, you know, when the school committee gets the newsletters from the elementary schools and the middle school, especially a couple of the elementary schools, you could just see the diversity in the newsletter, spreading the word and including stuff like that, diversity. It's so nice to see, especially the all public ones, you know. So I know that's coming from you, the regional African, and the workshops, and the kind of the posture, so. So, like you said, it's about the LOs, we have 65 days a year.
Mr. Schoonover, obviously great, I appreciate you putting this together. What are the things that, and I'm happy to know that you're on target, obviously at this time you feel that you're on target, which is a, it's a good feeling when you're halfway, maybe halfway through. Do you think, when you say for number five, effective communication, and I love that, you know, during the whole COVID manner, you had that newsletter out, you kept people informed of what was going on, and it's, it was great to know. People felt safe, they knew what was happening, what to expect, and things like that. The only thing, and I don't know if this is something that you and your administrators, but mostly this is about you, is communicate the milestones of our students as well. Because I think we're really lacking in that, and I'll share that again during the last couple of meetings ago about the young cats. We only hear it that one time, and it's usually not always what we want to hear. You, we have, there were many great things happening through the pre-K to the grade level, and I feel like sometimes it's usually something that you see on the sign or you see. And I appreciate when you sent the letter, you know, I saw the school, high school's newsletter that Mr. Taro got the science award, and a couple of days later I got it from, you sent it to us. I think those are things that we need to promote extremely, because between you, our staff, and our children, we're doing great things here, and I think some of that gets lost with the whole COVID discussion and things like that. So I know it's not broken down on here, that would be the only thing that I would want you to spend a little time on that, you and your colleagues.
I agree with you completely, and that same message was certainly reinforced with you last week at the annual SSNC conference. Several of the sessions, I'd like to address how school districts could and should be promoting students and achievements of students, and more frequently. And it's one of those things, it was acknowledged that when everything else is normally done, that tends to be something that gets said aside, but we have to, keep our focus on it and continuously tell that positive story of all the things that happened and stuff like that.
And challenges too, you know, very difficult.
I'm just mad, I think that it's the important, you know, some of the recent talk about showcasing more in some of these meetings, not taking a lot of time for showcasing students, you know, students and organizations in the school. I think that's good, especially for me, who doesn't have a student in business right now. You know, sometimes you get that, but then the numbers and this and that, and we're seeing kids and students and activities reflect, and you mentioned that the profits, when they're at, one of the groups that are at, some of the students there are in this situation. It's so rough, but I know we have a lot of, so showcasing, kind of keep us on focus, that's what it's all about.
Right.
I just said, I've noticed, just as a parent, too, that I think in the future we can really do more positive stories, but I think it's actually really good. My Twitter feed is full of Somerset Berkeley when I wake up and I'm in a chapter, and I think that's a great thing. Athletics in particular, but not limited to that, and other social media as well, you know, Facebook, and it's old folks like us who are still, kids don't look at that much. But I've noticed, I think, maybe COVID, this might be a silver lining, right? Sort of COVID pushed us all to really communicate more and more quickly and more thoroughly, sort of their urgency and that, so maybe the silver lining is that we sort of keep those habits, and we use them to, you know, promote all the positive things. But I definitely, as a parent, I feel like I have the information that I need, and I have noticed, I think, a significant increase in even the positive stories, the national merit, it's on the Twitter feed, the seniors, the showcasing seniors and their destinations from last spring, so it could always be more, but I've noticed, I think, a big improvement, an increase in that. So, and that goes to the administrators at the high school as well. And I'm glad it focused, too, and we're great to talk about that.
I just want to say, Mr. Goddard, Ms. Gary, I'm sorry, because I was talking that way, and I know I have a mask, I don't know if you're able to hear. You're okay. We're good. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, I think number, item numbers three and four.
Right.
And that brings us to the contract authority law for this building. He's got to make it, he might fall asleep. I had a science question a few earlier, could you move up? Grant writer position.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I, with the.
Can everybody just talk a little louder when they're talking? I'm having a lot of trouble, and I haven't said anything yet, but I can't, I hear every third word.
If we could.
Victory includes, I can't really get everybody to, if every, every third word. If we could just talk a little higher.
If we could, just for the sense of time, Mr. Gore had asked the chairs if we could move up discussion of the grant writer position number eight. So with everyone's permission, if we could do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You asked us to be on.
Mr. Schoonover, you want, sorry, you want me to start? Oh, please. Okay. So, Mr. Schoonover, Ron, myself, and James and Suzie, we have a side meeting on adding grant writer position. Would you like it to be shared by both districts?
Bob, Bob, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of that.
Can you hear me?
No.
I'll try to shout if I can ask out. So, Mr. Schoonover, Ron, James and Suzie, and myself, we had a meeting to discuss a grant writer for both districts. It would be a part-time position, and Mr. Suzie suggested that we should potentially form a task force to go and seek out some grants and try to identify some different areas we could focus on before we go and add a position.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
I'm just trying to understand this sidebar conversation with the Suzie there, but, well, I mean, we've talked about grant writers for probably until the last one, two, or three years of contract, like, is it in this year's budget, or is it?
Not.
Is it not in this year's budget? I think we posted for it before, and we're never going to have it again.
So, actually, I can, I can go on, but we, I believe we put it in the budget two years ago. We took it out, and we got some big special education funds from our district. So what I'd like to do is revisit and get it back on the budget for this year and try to pull the position. It's something we've already discussed.
So you're asking for us to go to back to the budget for this upcoming budget?
Correct.
For next year?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, I thought just jumping, having served with a grant writer, something, and now a business as a grant writer, I like the idea of looking out what would be eligible for, because unfortunately, this district like Somerset is not going to be eligible for the same things that Paul River and the Gaiders Hall are eligible for. It's a lot easier as a grant writer to write grants and receive funding for either public schools or even nonprofits that are in districts that are considered, you know, either ACDs or, you know, underprivileged. I remember about six or seven years ago, having a discussion with Somerset Berkeley in my role as a grant writer, it was very difficult to even identify who we'd be eligible for. So I think it's important to look first before we find the position to make sure it's worth the investment in a grant funding goal, there are any goals. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Love it if you could help out in task force, could you say, go with it?
I'm more than happy, I've written hundreds of grants, actually, small and large, so it's something that we've done for many years now. So it's unfortunate but true, Somerset isn't necessarily eligible, same thing for Berkeley, because of our population, for many that other surrounding districts are eligible for.
I understand, and I've looked online too, and I've seen what our grants are versus other districts, and I can think we probably could do a little better, Jeff and Ron worked very hard, and I can think that it was there for help, and, you know.
And that would make sense, that would make sense. I know we have federal, federal funding, United States funding, I can understand how that would be helpful and supportive, so it depends on the ultimate goal, right, and what we're trying to serve with this position, to go out and get general funding or to really support what we're already getting, you know, funding for.
Bob, I'm not saying that's not a bad idea, and it's great to bring it up from spring. My question is, have we ever had a grant in the law?
Not in my time.
Thank you. That's seven years.
Not in my time either.
Okay. Six, please. All right, so we'll bring up the discussion.
I just, besides identify, Mr. Pierce, besides identifying, I would also like to know what this person's role would actually entail besides writing it, because unless they're being the administrator, tracking the funding and all that, because speaking to Mr. Taro, well, Mr. Taro made a comment at one of our last meetings that his team cannot handle any more on their plate. So I have to keep that in mind. I know free money's great, I mean, you get it, but if we don't have the resources to actually man that, so I don't know if you have a different feeling, but it would have to be part of that person's responsibility to, because I have to be, unless, you know, you've had that discussion, I wasn't prepared to, so.
My position has changed, and I still think there's opportunities that we have to, you know, just ignore. They should figure out what the bandwidth is, how we get back to the work, you know, and editing. This is maybe, I can't remove some of my financial responsibilities to the constant grant, because I have to be really careful by saying, okay, you're going to get the grant, and you're going to spend it, but then it's recording requirements, whether it's care requirement or anything else, that becomes a little more complicated, time-consuming, so that's where my concern is.
So I'd like to clarify that there's a difference, right? So when you are bringing the grant, part of it is a huge recording and compliance piece of it, and that's very difficult to build into the jobs that people are doing every day. So if we are receiving federal, state funding that requires this federal recording, it really is outside of a regular, you know, job responsibility, so we do need support for that. And I'm not familiar with what we're already receiving, so that would be important to know, too. I don't want to minimize it, but I think it's a good thing to look at and see what we're already receiving, like from Desi and others, if we are, and what we can do. I want to just clarify on this statement.
Just sound like a budget discussion, for those, right? Bob?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not very long, but yes.
Well, yeah, when we, when that first round of budget, we put it in, and then the attrition, the data comes up.
And I like the idea, too, of in the meantime, kind of trying to figure out, you know, is this a million dollars in grants that we're eligible for, or is this $50,000? Because we're not going to, so I think that that would be like a task force kind of thing, kind of putting that information together, maybe getting job descriptions from other communities that have grant writers, just so that, you know, Victor's, Victor's question is trying to answer, and then we move into the budget piece.
So we don't give it task force, you know, to get the idea, you know, kind of on it.
I don't think that's necessary to make sense.
I don't know what the task, what you mean by a task force. I do think it's an excellent idea for people to look at. I mean, the general, I understand the reservations that Jennifer has, but generally speaking, they talk about a good grant writer should be able to double, triple, or quadruple their salary in terms of what they bring to the district. So if we can, between now and budget time, look at whether it's something that would really benefit our district with people like Jennifer, and I'm always, I'm always concerned about drawing too many people into this process, and then they've got more meetings, and, look, I, I don't know, maybe I just have a little reservation about the term task force, but I think it would be worthwhile, or relatively small, we'll look at and see if it's something that we should, in fact, consider putting into the, to the budget with, with the prospect that we'd be thinking in terms of a grant writer at least, you know, maybe not the first year, but long-term, paying their own salary and more.
And then we can think about the indirect cost, or the indirect cost and everything, so. Something to explore, for sure.
And it would probably be great if we had the problem of having to worry about getting someone to administer the grants, because we've got someone who works, who did, we're doing that.
I see, no worries. We could have some help.
I completely understand your concerns, but I know I don't have any real experience in school, and it's been my experience for the last year and a half that unless somebody picks something on, pushes it forward, which never happens, and this is something that was budgeted two years ago, we ended up picking it out, and I think, I agree with you, this is something that could be beneficial for the district, they should be able to double, triple, twice, and double salary when they get back. So I think it's worth looking into, and some people will be dragged into it, and that's just how it goes, but I think, I think the rewards outweigh the cost.
Sure, Bob, the reason why I'm not denying the task force, but when I look around this table and I see the age of experience right across the table, I mean, there's a lot of place we can come into, so.
Sure, absolutely, you know, whatever you think.
So, I mean, if you want to take this on and champion it, and I don't think we're a performing official subcommittee, but if you want to take this on if you're passionate about the grant writer, and you want to bring some information in the budget season, I mean, I'm all for that. And if you want to work with, I forgot, I think you said.
I'll make it very clear, I'm not impressed in what you want to decide to make.
Okay, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Gore. Thank you. Special speaker. Okay. So this is a pool of contract authority law for this district, and we had some information, in fact, that we had a number of people that proposed it by our insurance provider. Looking at that, the lower, you know, we're assured by our insurance carrier that all of these organizations have done a good job with it, so it's constantly, I think, the quote was based on our people's payments, people, you know, it was a very specific document that was proposed. So according to our people, so it falls down to the lowest price provider as recommended by the insurance carrier, and that would be Omaha, U of Omaha, Omaha. So the only thing that, Mr. Taro, I've talked about this, but the one thing that we have, that I'm not sure about is that, is that, is that list of people that we create for this, we have the actual number of people that we create that policy.
I think we have to just look at the list and see who we're covering, everybody. I gave them just kind of an administrative, non-union type position, yes, so we just have to confirm that those are the individuals that are.
Right, so that'd be part of the sorting out for us. So the, the cost may not be exactly as quoted as the number of participants that probably go down, but.
Yeah, it would probably be a marginal difference.
Yeah.
In the quarter, I think, Mr. Pierce, have a question about the proposals that we came to once every season, I do not have an opportunity to look at what the three quotes that a brand writer was able to secure for us here.
Yeah, and we had, to be fair, we, we did have a document that came over the way from the carrier, was comparing, you know, each aspect of those companies and what they, what they, I didn't really ensure they matched up properly, but that, you know, we were kind of chasing a little bit, we didn't get that to work yesterday, and so we're not sure how important that chance is to put that, that stuff. So, I mean, I think this is something we should be doing. We're looking for both, we all do it, just understanding that, you know, we're going to vote for us there, that we may maintain a little bit based on if there's money, contract or something that we consider. Mr. Pierce, did you have any other questions? No, I think, I think this is something that we intend to implement a while ago, and what I would suggest is we have, we have the bids, and I would leave it to the business manager, Director of Business and Finance, to, to make a, make a final determination, just as long as we get this insurance in place within, you know, the next thirty to sixty days, and that we, we vote to approve the idea that we're going to purchase this disability coverage based upon the lowest, what's the term, not lowest, and.
Is the lowest response, the lowest response?
Most, lowest in responsible care.
And my question is, in the discussion, is it short or long term or both?
It's actually in, in the contract, it's referred to short term, but the horrendous or high-end law, so it's.
So that's what's going to be in the most, short term?
So. So if there's no further discussion, I'd make a, extend the motion to have it, someone said Berkeley, we can choose, make a food, short and or long term disability insurance policy for administrators. Some more?
Second.
Second one? Are you third in second? All those in favor?
Aye.
On behalf of K8, I want to take a motion. Yeah, so let's go through, to a short and or long term disability insurance policies for administrators. So, Mr. Big Mike, Mr. Gary?
Thank you.
Mindless to go on? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, number six, I'd like to have members of the shared positions subcommittee.
Do you have to go?
Thank you.
So the four of us, myself, Mr. Jerry, Mr. Pierce, we've, we already met a couple weeks ago, and without Mr. Schoonover and Mr. Taro, and we discussed how we wanted to approach this. We, we wrote off the back, we didn't want to put additional workload and a lot on the administrative team or the shared positions team to have to lie hours when we go through that process. One of the things we identified early on was that the sixty-five, thirty-five split, I believe it was done ten years ago, or whenever it was, and at that time, I believe it was based off of student enrollment. So we, we decided to take that approach with a couple outliers that we had a second meeting, and we specifically asked the breakdown of student population of this special education group. So we got some input from Ms. Ashton. We also asked input on there is an IT analyst position, a person under Mr. Lovett, that is split ninety, ten. The region's picking up ninety percent, and the public school is picking up ten percent. That's the only one that didn't follow the matrix of the sixty-five, thirty-five split. So we got some feedback from Mr. Lovett and Mr. Schoonover that that split still remains true. So we, we had a discussion.
Repeat yourself one more time. Last couple seconds, if I have trouble hearing you.
That we, sorry, I was on a roll. We met with Mr. Lovett, oh, oh, we had, we got some feedback from Mr. Lovett and Mr. Schoonover about the IT position.
Yep.
And it's currently a ninety to ten split, ninety percent in the high school, the regional high school budget, and ten percent to the Somerset public school side. And we, the feedback we got that that split should remain the same, that that person is still doing ninety percent of the work for the region. So we asked for some statistics on enrollment, and it came to a sixty-two, thirty-eight split, and that was pretty close for the special education population as well. And in an effort to move things along for the upcoming budget season, the group decided to utilize student enrollment as a matrix for the split, and to review that every five? Three years? Three years? Five years?
Five years, sorry.
Although we'll look at annually, the actual change to, to the split probably won't be done every year for consistency state for the budgeting process.
But I think, if I'm correct, so we've entered, we talked about coming up with a standard that would be easily traced back, each, and each and every year. And we debated that versus getting a kind of analysis from each of the people in the administration and in support as to how much time they spend this week on K8 versus this weekend on the region. And we weighed the pros and cons of those two approaches and felt that the enrollment was a solid, I guess, consistent benchmark for that, that separation of costs. With the exception, and we looked into special education, and that was very close, but with the exception of technology. So the current techno, technician, right, technology award, you know, for a high school would remain at ninety percent for the high school, ten percent for the K8, and with the remaining districts, with the remaining positions shared by both districts, at the sixty-two, thirty-eight split. And correctly, this is what I couldn't pick it up, I couldn't open it up in my phone. We looked at, we actually looked at the changes that would happen in that Excel spreadsheet when we changed those positions. In many cases, it wasn't significant when, when we played with the numbers slightly back and forth. And so we thought that standard made a lot of sense, so that it wouldn't be burdensome for administration to go forward and kind of repulse it back every year. And I think, Mr. Gadda, the delta based on the positions that we looked at in the matrix that we examined several times, the change would be a shift.
Yeah, it was about forty thousand dollars.
About?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand dollars.
Shift from the K8 to the high school, moving forward with the sixty-two, thirty-eight split.
And maintaining technology.
Yeah.
So that's our recommendation, that we keep that, that we look at shared positions in that light, and that we review it.
Can I, can I say something? I say, I just want to say respectfully to all my fellow school community members on the regional side, so, and thank you for your hard work. I, you know, I just didn't know where we were going with this, or what the mission was. You know, my left knee is a true professional, and to his left is a true professional, and none of us is a true professional. There are going to be times, yes, they work seventy percent, thirty percent, but we don't even have an ankle bracelet, we don't have one either.
Agreed.
And I mean that, and I say that respectfully, they know their job. Well, I just didn't know where we were going with this. And if you know, if the superintendent's spending ninety percent of the time for the region, we're going to let them know about it.
That's going to happen.
So respectfully, it's about a little bit of timeline, but I, I, our shared positions, those are true professionals working for us.
No, no doubt. I mean, I totally agree with you, and that's why we didn't really feel the need for them to be kind of clocking in for one district and clocking in for another. They're professionals, they're, they're working on behalf of all the students that are served. And so, but, to that point, Mr. Donald, the shift has, has shifted slightly. You know, Somerset, public schools used to have sixty-five percent of their total enrollment. They now have sixty-two. The region had thirty-five percent, now we have thirty-eight. So it makes sense to revisit that, I mean, it's been ten years since we looked at it. So I think that's the extent that we thought we should be moving on.
I said everything on respect.
Can it, Mr.?
Can I just say?
No, I, I, I'm sorry, I brought this up.
Well, well, I think, well, the subcommittee members speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're speaking as a subcommittee. I, I, no, I still want to drag this out, I just wanted to mention, I don't think anybody mentioned the actual statistics in Special A, which were actually thirty-five, sixty-five. So they were actually very consistent with the old formula. My, my feeling was, that was one example, and I was, I was willing to go along with the adjustment based on it all. And the other thing we wanted to look at was the ninety percent position at the high school, because my, my view was that there are a lot more phone books in the K8 district now than there were when we came up with this formula. And, but I was satisfied with the explanation that we received that Mark's, most of Mark's time is still spent at the high school, but he does do some work in the K8, particularly in the summertime. So, like, those are just two, you know, sort of data points that I just wanted to make.
Can I ask a question? The, the enrollment numbers are based on October first, enrollment for this year?
They were.
So I'm just wondering if, I don't know the history, historically what it's been, I'm wondering if, have we seen any of this change attributed to COVID at all? We, or is this, we think this is a genuine change? Because I know there was pre-K and kindergarten, and some kids didn't enroll last year. Is there any sort of hangover effect from that that we think might change? And I'm, I guess my follow-up question is, looking at it every five years, if we're going to make minute changes, like two percent, so, you know, a percentage here, a percentage there, I don't know. I, I guess I need, I need to think a little bit about how often that gets looked at. Do you think it needs to be more, if it's minute changes or less? I'm, I'm asking, because we debated three to five years.
Yeah, I think I actually need to process it a little bit, but I'm just thinking that if it's going to be based, because you're looking at an October enrollment, I'm thinking about how does that line up with your budget season? And, you know, how often you, is it worth recalibrating it? I don't know if it's that close, but my, my first, I certainly think you answered it, was, is any of this change, is this a true population change, or is any of this COVID related?
And I think we, we debated, do we look at it every year? But I think we want to be mindful of how much of a shift it is, and, and Mr. McDonald's points, these are professionals that we work with, that they serve all of the people. And I think for their budgeting purposes, to make it a fraction of a percent this year, a fraction of a percent this year, that's why we figured to look at it over multiple years, whether it's three or five, I think we landed on five, but that doesn't really matter.
Just, just to address the enrollment point, so it is not just a COVID shift, we've been seeing in our elementary schools, a declining enrollment over the past several years. And whereas our older grades right now still, Somerset and Somerset Berkeley system, Somerset side of you consistently have hundred ninety to two hundred ten students every single year of grade level. In K to four span or so, we're averaging probably one fifty, one sixty, for grades on there. It's just, there's kind of, let me now see. So we have seen an overall decrease in our population, but, and the high school over this period of time has maintained its thousand, thousand plus students, but the Somerset enrollment has probably dropped by like hundred fifty or so over the past sixty, seventy years.
And then my other follow-up question would be, do we have projections for, say, the next five, and where you can, you can get those, right?
Uh, we are, we just, I just entered an agreement with NOSD, so we can have that enrollment, or we haven't had that before, but that is important information that we need to receive, so we'll be getting that in a few minutes.
So I just think that maybe before we finalize anything, that if we, if we have access to that information now, if we're proposing, you know, going five years out, that we sort of maybe take a look at projections, we do, factor that in. I don't know that it's going to be radically different, but if we have the information, I feel like we should look at it. I think, I think what I took from it is, it's kind of like this big, you're going to figure out, you're going to weigh everything out, like, what's going to be worth our time over ten, our staff's time? And one of the things we looked at is, like, logistically, you know, Meg Ashton might have a huge workload this year at the high school, because you have, you have children that can, that can be, you know, a little bit more cumbersome than others. So we, but maybe they age out next year, so do we want her to have to keep coming back to us every year and say, well, you know, Tommy aged out, and he's gone now, so now I'm going to be spending a lot more, but now, you know, I have another student that's very cumbersome at the elementary school. And, and, you know, maybe not. We talked about looking at it every year, just looking at the number, and is it drastic enough to change? Is it, do we have a half a percent or a one percent? Or do we have a three or four percent change that we need to look at and adjust the number? I think that that's something that if you looked at every budget season, just like, what's the projection? Or what's the four, two or three-year projection? And do we need to think about maybe changing that this year? But I think what we all agreed is that to have, I mean, I guess it's mainly, obviously we already, we talked to the tech, the tech person, but I, so I guess it's mainly like, you know, Ron, Jeff, and Meg Ashton. So I think when I look at it, I just think that to, to kind of like, put it, it's all individual, we would have had to essentially meet with everybody individually, have them kind of write out, what do you do? But it's fluid, it just changes all the time. You don't know what's going to happen.
I have to speak, ladies and gentlemen, I have to speak. None of you heard what I asked. None of you. Let me tell you what I did ask, to revisit the shared positions, because this gentleman is working his rear wheel. That is the reason why I asked for this, is the shared position makes sense, because I even had a meeting, I said, if I'm going to continue to pay sixty-five percent or sixty-two percent, does it make more sense for K to eight to get its own business manager? Because we're paying for a halftime HR person. Before K to eight happened, I mean, before this regionalization, we had one gentleman who acted like his, the human resources and, and the business manager. He handled both of them with the assistance of the superintendent. How can you think that you've made a legitimate subcommittee? Yes, I'm insulting the work that you did. How, no, I'm speaking now. How do you think you can make a decision for Mr. Taro if you didn't even ask him? He works on two budgets, fifty-fifty. Two budgets, and you want to know, he is working on the business man, the business school, but he also works on help, all, every single piece about human resources, because guess what? The town does it for the K8 people. How can you honestly say you revisit this issue without sitting down with the people to see exactly, Mr. Superintendent, I have to ask you a public question right now. In the percentage that you work, do you spend sixty-five percent of your time or sixty-two percent of time in the K8 level?
Often, no.
Often, no. Okay. Mr., Mr. Taro, on, in an open session, I apologize, this is bringing to you on an open session and not bringing it in a, a subcommittee format, on a daily, on a yearly basis, I'm not asking about punching clocks, do you feel that you spend sixty-two percent of the time just on K8? Do you feel that you spend sixty-two percent of the time just on K-8 items?
I'm not sure if I can tell you what percentage I work.
Yep.
Fifty-fifty. Sorry, I don't.
I just asked two questions in an open session that you guys didn't even think it was valuable to ask. I'm not, I'm going to tell you right now, this is not about the dollars. This is about human beings working to the point that we're trying to figure out ways how to make their responsibilities less. We're spending, K-8 is spending sixty-two percent of Mr. Taro's position. I can tell you, this budget season is going to be a little interesting. Because you know something? I hate to say this, if you want to make it about money only, you're fleecing the K-8 possibility, and if so, it's all the same pocket. So what if Berkeley would have to pay a couple extra thousands of dollars? And I don't know that number. Because you want to know why I don't know that number? Because I have no documents in front of me. None whatsoever. A subcommittee was put together and I have blank pieces of paper. That's all I have. How do you say you actually did a qualifying subcommittee work when you didn't even speak to people about, the only people you spoke to is of the ninety-ten. I actually admit, you know, I'm glad you spoke to, and I'm not asking every year to turn things, I'm just saying use common sense. Are we putting all of our money on one or two individuals to do something? Did any of you even ask to see if we needed an assistant superintendent? Did any of you ever ask if any of our shared positions in the administration level needs more help? Anybody ask these questions?
The, the answer to that is always going to be yes. But can, I think the question is, can we actually do that?
Yes, we can. Because you want to know something? Because we go into the budget season. You have to do the record. If the answer is yes, you didn't bring me any documents. I hate to say this for the public, I think you guys failed because I didn't think, you didn't fail me. You did not fail me. I think you failed all of our administration because you didn't do the survey that you were supposed to do, not just about this division of shared positions.
Wait, wait one second.
Hold on, hold on, the chair, the chair. The chair, right now, we are going to regulate the meeting in one at a time, please, one at a time, short of a minute.
So we just, Bob just said that, Mr. Budget said that.
I didn't say that.
Two, two years ago, we took out a grant writer position, which was a part-time position, right? It was like thirty thousand dollars. So we had to skim off of a budget to pay for a Special A. But now you're saying that if we needed a stu, a second superintendent and a second business manager, we'll put it in the budget. I think we were all trying to be realistic. We spoke to people, so to insinuate that we didn't, you're wrong. We put, this was.
All right, can I have the minutes? Just, just give me the minutes.
And no accusatory someone's wrong. I mean, let's just keep it calm, please.
I think perhaps, I think the first thing we said is kind of, what's the mission here? Am I right? And we kind of all talked about what, what do we want to get out of this? And what do we, how do we move forward with this? And I think that it's, I resent the fact you answered that we failed anyone.
Okay. I, 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 he did say it with respectfully in front of it, so I mean, let's, so let's, we all get along. So my question, are we tabling this tonight? Because there was supposed to be a vote on the committee to adopt an extended allocation across the chair. Are we, are we voting on this tonight?
I, I don't. I'm happy to table it and resign from the subcommittee.
Okay. So I'm sorry, you said what?
I'm happy to table it and I'll resign from the subcommittee.
Okay. Well, that's why I did want to thank the subcommittees for working, the time you spent. I know you spent a few hours on this. And you know how I feel on this, so I, I just want to, just want to say thank you for your hard work. And I, I see where Mr. Rashad was coming from. His point's amazing.
But can I say something?
Yep.
I just would like to say that we are all sitting at a school, and, you know, we have all these acronyms, pride, respect. And I, I just think that some of the comments were inappropriate, and I think that we should be role models. And I, I don't think that this was the place or the time, and, and I, my colleagues resigned from a subcommittee because of it. So I just think that pride, respect, let's all be role models. That is what we preach.
What was the reach and feeling on table this? I could not hear.
Yeah, I don't really see, but this way, I think that the subcommittee has done what they were asked to do, and what I can see. And they've made the presentation to the committee, and obviously it's a table. You can vote it, vote it up or down, but it doesn't make a difference to table. What, what technique does not agree with the evaluation, right?
I, I want to be mindful of the time that it is right now and, and the discussion that's been had. But I do want to just say, there's a different way of doing it. There, there's a way of saying, I bear with the subcommittee said, I would have liked you to go in this direction and look for that, and look at something else. I'll be quite honest, from my whole perspective, I did not consider, it didn't enter into my awareness that we were, we would consider bifurcating the positions and creating two superintendents or an assistant superintendent or a, two directors of business and finance. I'm being honest, Mr. Rashad, it's not that I didn't do my job. That wasn't something that was in my, in my awareness of what we were looking at. We were looking at, I thought, we were looking at the way these positions were split. We talked to Mr. Taro, we talked to Mr. Schoen, we, we got feedback from Ms. Ashton, we went to Ms. Olivetti, we got feedback. So we did talk to people. We may have missed some points that you specifically wanted. I apologize. I, it was not, I was not aware of those positions. Aware of those questions that you had. But to insinuate that we didn't do our job, I did the job that I thought was in front of me. And I worked collegially with the, the members of the subcommittee to address the issue in any given various ways. We felt sure in our, but it doesn't mean that we did any less for the community or any less for the administrators that we care about and want to serve. So I understand that you're disappointed, and I'm fine with it if you want us to go and look at it again. I just think that there was a different way of steam. And so, Mr. Chairman, if, if there is a desire for us to look at something else, you know, the committee's members, it's not just one of us, not just me, not, because I can tell us, well, we'd like you to go back and look at X, Y, and Z. And then the committee has that instruction to go do it. That's the way I look at it. I, I mean, I think we're all, we all roll up our sleeves, we all do the best we can. We were very mindful of the time that we were spending with our administrators. We didn't want to be abusive of it, we wanted to be mindful. I honestly, sincerely, Ma, Ma Kuba did not look at bifurcating those positions or look for, and we actually talked about the fact that if there were savings on the K-8 level, that perhaps they could look at shifting those savings to positions that might be needed. So we had those discussions. It might not have been in the vein that, you know, we have minutes, we can provide them to you. I guess, so I leave it to the committee, the, the larger committee to decide.
Hi, there you go.
Let's go.
I just, there's a little bit of a misunderstanding here. Maybe some of the words used weren't. Well, I'm not going to say anything else, but it, it's just nine times out of ten, things like this happen, it's just a misunderstanding. I don't, it might be good if you go back and give a look at some of those things again that Rashad mentioned. It, it's just, you know, I, I don't know if it's necessary to get all worked up on this. You know, we're, we're still, this is a very small community at the end of the day. We all have to work together. And I think everybody wants the best for the districts, and I say both districts. And I think, you know, you know, it is what it is, and people are passionate, but just, I think we need to work together and just see what you can do. Mr. Pierce, sorry.
I was just going to say, I think we need, if there are issues that this committee, the majority of the committee wants us to look at, that it can be happy to look at. I never conceived that we were to be looking at the idea of an assistant superintendent or an assistant business manager or the regional school district hiring its own business manager. So that, that comes down to micromanaging personnel, which is not our responsibility for superintendents. And we'll say, my attitude toward this issue has always been that we have an objective standard like enrollment. Because I'm not going, if we're going to do something different, I, as a, as a practicing attorney, I recorded my time fifty years on a quarter-hour basis. And if we're going to start dividing up based upon workload, then I'm going to want some kind of standard to be applied so that we know how this time is being applied. Mrs. Schoen over said, when asked that question, that maybe he doesn't spend sixty-five percent of his time. Maybe that's true. But I know we have one school in the regional school district with more administrators than any of the schools in the K-8 district, and there are four schools in the K-8 district. So that to me is twenty percent versus eighty percent. And, and we are about to embark on a new middle school project, and how are we the first to admit that when we were building the high school, we may have taken up more time of the business manager, although at that time we had our own full-time treasurer. But we may very well have a disproportionate share of the time of the business manager during that project period. And I'm quite confident that the K-8 district will have a disproportionate amount of Mr. Taro's time during the middle school project. So all of those factors, we can look at them down to the nucia. But from my perspective, I've always felt that this objective standard is the one that we're developing, and we're just going to put more pressure. One of the things that Mr. Taro mentioned in our meetings, he had a concern that we would be looking at these things every few years because there's significant bookkeeping work that needs to be done to make these minor changes in salary. Because all of these shared positions receive two separate paychecks with all of the calculations that go into the withholding, the sharing of the medical insurance expenses and all of that. And it all has to be adjusted every time there's an adjustment to this formula. Or, so can you imagine the situation where you've got, we had a list of all of the shared positions, and you have to, and, and all of these positions are going to be treated differently and on different percentages so that there's going to be a different percentage of their salary. Each of these, what, fifteen positions or so? And all of the withholding that goes with it. So, no, if, if the committee wants to give us a further charge, I'm happy to go back and look at it again, but I want it to be a consensus request.
I would just like to keep a minute to uplift what Ms. Gary said. If we are, I was not involved in the subcommittee. I, I'm sure it was in the minutes, we had a subcommittee, but if we are working towards building students who are empathetic and respectful, all of us around this table need to embody that right here, every time we meet. And I'm passionate, I'm very passionate about many things. But we can be passionate and respectful and empathetic at the same time. And I want us to keep that in mind as we move forward because we're not always going to agree. That's the world we live in. But we need to find ways to be thoughtful and respectful of the work that we're all doing. Because we are doing it, most of us, very volunteer, mostly volunteer. And we do it because we want to do it, and we're passionate about the schools. And we want to be role models for those that come in. And that's very important to me. And I need to uplift that because it needs to be said. I don't think it's been said enough. Thank you for saying this.
Next. And now, I have to respond. First of all, I consider myself angry. Mrs. Vincent, Mrs. Gary, how many years have you heard about shared positions and asking people to look at? How many times have you heard that?
Not, not many, Mr. Rashad, not many.
Okay. I've been talking about this for ten years. For ten years, I've been asking people to look at it. And for, finally, for everyone to say that they're going to look at it, and I don't believe they actually have heard what I said. I really don't. Because I'm really concerned. I'm, you know, when you want to say you should think about all this people's feelings, I'm thinking about my administration. This is the, the last three years I've heard our administration, we as a group have discussed many times about possibly losing people. That is what I'm thinking about. And when I asked, and you all agreed to look into it, and only one little piece, the piece that means the least to me, the funding piece? The funding piece is the least that I care about. I actually care about my administration. I want to keep good people here. I don't believe they did the job. I don't believe, I believe I was ignored. I really do. I believe I was ignored. So with all due respect to Mrs. Gary and anyone else that feels hurt, I hate to say this, but when you're not hurt for ten years, and you're not, and you're focusing about the dollars and not the people, in my opinion, and I don't, and I honestly believe what Julie said, she didn't believe, she didn't understand what the task, I believe that. I really do believe that. But my frustration is, is what I was hoping for wasn't here, and it still isn't here. Because I feel like people are working extremely hard. So with all due respect to anyone that I've hurt, I'm not here to be people's friends. I'm here, I'm here to advocate for people that work under our jurisdiction, and I will continue to support them, and I will continue to defend them. So with all due respect, I've known most of you personally and some people I don't know, but here, I'm trying to get things mattered done. So I apologize if I'm a little too direct, if I'm too Donald Trump-like today. You know, for all, you know, just being facetious and bringing some comment to this. I'm hurt, I'm extremely disappointed. I'm extremely disappointed. And I shared that, and I'm ready to move forward to the next topic, but I'm just saying, I don't want to be sat here and lectured to by anyone about pride, respect, and all of that. I really don't care because I know how I feel. And none of you have acknowledged, except Julie, said, I'm sorry, Mr. Rashad, I didn't get what you're, what you were asked for. She was the only one that acknowledged that to me, and I may be Mr. Pierce, but at some point, you know, but all I'm saying is, the task wasn't completed, and I'm fine with it because obviously it's going to move on. And look, it's eight fifty-one, and we're starting to go to the.
Ms. Ms. I'm just, before you put this to bed, I just have to tell you. You just, you just said that you were, you degraded the subcommittee without a reason. There's no reason to be like that to anyone.
I will.
And your next sentence, you said, I don't think you understood me. That's okay. Maybe, maybe we didn't understand where you were going with it. So you could have just asked that we relook at it. You can lecture you about pride and respect. I think that this is one of the videos we're going to go back and look at and have second thoughts about because the way we treat people is unacceptable.
All right, can we move on? Yeah, the chair, so we are going to decide to table this, and I'll just have the subcommittees go back at a later date.
Who's on the subcommittee now?
No, I just asked.
Can I ask a part of my question, please? Could I, can I understand that it's the, the proposal, I just want to make sure I understand, or the recommendation coming out of the subcommittee? Would be that beginning with FY twenty-three, that the allocation switch from sixty-five, thirty-five to sixty-two, thirty-eight?
Yep.
Based on enrollment?
Yes.
That's the recommendation?
Yes.
The entirety of the recommendation?
And that we will, yes.
And that it would be reexamined every five years?
Okay. With the exception of the technology director?
The ninety-ten, right. So I, this is just on discussion for me. I'm really close to other issues that may not have been addressed aside, just on that. I'm close to that if it's based on October one enrollment, it doesn't sound like it's probably going to fluctuate a lot. If it is going to fluctuate, it's probably going in a direction that adds more to the region and less the K-8. My, my only two concerns is I actually do have to worry about the money. And as one of the Berkeley reps in the assessment, it is, it's a little bit different because there's sort of a Somerset High School assessment, there's Somerset K-8, that's all Somerset money. I do have to think about my Berkeley taxpayer and the assessment. Now, so which is why I'm fine with an objective measure like enrollment. I don't want people filling out timesheets who are professionals, I totally get that. I guess my only, my only question might be, I would be, I would be. I guess my only, my only question might be, I would be, I would be curious to see the projections since we have access to about... And I understand that that might actually be tilted more the other way. I'm okay with that. But if, if we're going to look at, if we're not going to adjust it each year based on October one enrollment, October one going into the next cycle season, which may be the next tinkering for not a lot of payback, I would just be curious, if we're going to make this adjustment that hasn't been changed in ten years, can we look ahead five years and maybe look at what, based on those projections that the average might be? And come up with a number like that as opposed to October twenty-one?
Just, just there, we see that in the Somerset Berkeley regional agreement that it says that it's looked at every year as far as the percentages of enrollment of students?
Between Berkeley and Somerset. Between Berkeley and Somerset at the region based on, yes, with the exception of the Carver Special Ed. But I think that's a little bit different than what we're talking about here, which is the salary of the administration, which goes to the region and then that gets covered up between Somerset and Berkeley. So again, I, I, I'm, I'm pretty okay, I'm really close to this. I would just like that little last bit of information for me to feel like, if I'm going to agree to something for five years that hasn't been changed in ten, I'd like more than one data point of one year.
Sure.
We can get that, I can be on board with this.
I think that, thank you. That information we can hopefully have by the end of December, early January, once the information is given to NESTA. And I just want to add another contributing factor to enrollment. We don't know how it'll impact then, but obviously three years from now, we'll be opening up a new middle school here. And that might have a positive impact on enrollment too, with the numbers that you've stated a while, they're going to decline. We may see that growth come back. Hopefully, that, that will be a piece of information that goes into this study. So hopefully that is also reflected in the objective home designs that we're looking at.
So if, if I may, so in that instance, you'd be looking at table this particular information, which is not going to be over till December. But the question is that we'll be building next year, but based on enrollment.
Yes, we're going to have a joint meeting in January, November, so.
All right, super consensus to clean on the tables for this panel.
Thank you for the work. Let's start with the new picture. Okay, number seven, updating our regionalization study.
So we, we went to our consultants, our consultants, to find out what dates we and this team would be available for you to join presentation to this committee and the regional planning board, which will meet up with members of both heater districts. And we would of course include the entirety of the Somerset, the K8 committee as well as the entirety of the Brooklyn K8 committee. We'd make it a public meeting. And so I'd read dates to throw out to the committee. And then what we, what we talked about doing is because it's hard to get a good date when you send it out to a hundred people, we would focus on this group, right? And then the regional planning board and then we do that. So I'm going to throw out three dates and then we can send out a, a meeting call so that everybody can respond formally. So just so that you can keep in mind, we're looking at November twenty-third. And if you want to let me know it, that would be good because we need to give Mr. Abraham some notice. So if you just want to, if it's possible on that day, he needs a week's notice to just clear the rest of the year. November thirtieth would be the auto alternative date and then December twenty-first.
Now, Chair, I mean, Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving and Christmas. I can tell you, I'm in dog, all three, you know.
So we can look at January, but they were looking to try to complete the study before the end of the year.
Because we're on this topic, I just, you know, I, I served on the regional planning committee and, and I'm going to ask our Berkeley reps to share what the community in Berkeley had said about regionalization.
We know that.
Yeah, I, I feel, I know we spent the money, but I feel like that report is basically, whatever the results may be, it's just something that I feel that Berkeley representatives that were at that town meeting may be very clear that it's something that they're not interested in. So I, I just feel like if whatever that report comes in and it says how great it would be to have a full regionalization, it's just, it would be almost like the group in Somerset that didn't want to, uh, uh, full regionalize at first and still feel some, still feel that way. I, I just feel like I'd rather just have a written report and send it to me, make it public to those. But I really don't feel like I want to be, so that's just my opinion. But I don't know, but I'm going to ask the, I'm going to respect the Berkeley to feel, to share how they feel about that because I know how your town felt about it.
I, I think, well, one thing about the dates, I do, I think that since there's not urgency, so, you know, this is ob, this is obviously a long, long, long conversation. I, I bump into January, I think the holidays are probably not a great, I think the postmasive have hooked up. So probably not a good time to add, suggest I'll get to January or beyond. I, I think we sort of have a divide that we've got in, in conversations in Berkeley. I do think though that it's certainly an issue that we both, we have sort of pledged to make sure that whatever conversation, that we actually don't want it to be just a report that gets sawed, that we want it very much to have a, a public meeting that can be well advertised and all that, because I think there are people who do have strong feelings about it, Mr. Shado, as you said. And I think they would want the opportunity, it may not come, but the opportunity to attend a meeting. I, so I think a meeting after the holidays where that report could be discussed would, I think, would work well for.
The report did also include, because we asked it to, we asked them to analyze ways that the three districts could collaborate to save funds. So that's included in there. And so I think that that's a value for the three districts to hear. And Mr. Fensmiker and I were at the, as were Ms. Vincent and Ms. Sanders when we went before the Berkeley Board of Selectment. And I know that at least Mr. Larabee said that while there was some hesitancy on, on behalf of residents and the class, they thought it would be valuable to hear whatever came out of that, that report. So that's why we think we'll do it. I'll, I'll, we'll go back to, the, you have to say there's plenty of time now to present, to prepare. And it would be in January.
And perhaps those dates could be given to Ms. Vincent who could bring them back to Berkeley ahead of time?
Yes, absolutely.
Julie, I've been a part of the process from day one. I mean, I love my people from Berkeley. I've met a lot of good friends. They're fantastic. They're doing so much to the table. But the feeling I got is that they, they like the control and their candidate already, they like that. And they do such a great job. And I didn't know how they felt if they were, if they came into our system, they would lose that identity, which they should because they're just, it's a great K8 group over there. That was my feeling, so.
Any documents been presented to anyone yet that are public?
We just got kind of the, the draft notes, but they're not having one document yet. He just wanted to show us, this is the kind of information we want to put into a presentation. He said, okay, what date are you available? And we picked those. They gave us those dates and, and that's what we're presenting. But it would be with a document that would be needed there and all.
Anything else further before we go into public input? We have public input? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of public input?
Mike, I have somebody.
Yes, I'm sorry, you start.
Because the person who left spoke to me privately earlier. She was interested in updating on state, test and state. So I want to check maybe Mr. Sino would be talking.
I got you.
Was that?
Well, I, I know that's on our agenda for Monday.
That's why she was here though. That's why, I know, because she spoke to me. She's just been coming, asked a question tonight on it, so.
Can we discuss that?
I don't know what, what's the topic? Test and state is a program offered by the state that allows school districts to test students who have been identified as close contacts or not symptomatic with COVID. And by coming to school and having a, a test done, a rapid test, with results back in fifteen to twenty minutes, if it's negative, the student would be able to attend classes rather than being, having to self-isolate at home.
It's, it's optional too.
It's a parent opt, opt-in program.
We have that program. We have that program. He's pitching school.
I just wanted to point out she did wait an awful long time. And that's why I thought it was important to break it up.
Right, so my question is, because I know we've got an agenda for Monday, which I had a ton of questions. Am I allowed to ask those now or should I save them for Monday?
Save the same.
Yeah, I, I would say because if we had an agenda, we might have more people in the audience.
That's fine, Mr. Gore, I can say that because a lot of people knowing that we've got to apply detail with this, that they would want to be here to give their input.
I just wanted to acknowledge her presence. Actually, did wait.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, it is nine o'clock.
They can always use their job, ask them.
And I can, I can ask her some questions. I, I can, I can read back out to her. But she did wait an awful long time to speak and she wasn't able to make it to the end because she does have family and children at home.
Sure.
So I just wanted to note that she was here and that was her question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. McDonald. I just wish to hear more about this program. Do we have it at the high school? That we do not yet. So I think they have, so why, why you have it on your agenda, why don't we have it on our agenda for P G and here it is. Is, is it the administration that decides what is implemented or the school? I, I don't think it's officially, has to be approved by a school committee. Can be, I know most administrations have done it. I don't know, did Berkeley?
I don't think we officially approved it. The, the administration chose to do it. We may have talked about it with school committee, but we didn't have to officially approve it. And again, remember, we have one, one elementary school, one middle school. And we, we appealed to the state to get this like before school even started. Because we felt it was really important to get these kids and keep them in classes based upon our surveys and everything else done with families before we even started. So it was something that we've been doing almost since day one.
I know my granddaughter's kindergarten classes down to seven kids. So, you know, I, I'm all for masking and testing and vaccination, but if there's a protocol that's going to get kids back into the classroom, I'm for that as well. So I think we ought to hear about it.
We've had a number of, I will say that for our small district, it's been very helpful. Like even one of my young children, where they were staying in school because of it, so.
Okay, Mr. Shado. Just because this is a joint committee and I think this should be acknowledged. Once again, congratulations to Mr. Talbot for winning his, the science. I don't know the exact name of the award. I know what was saying.
M E S T?
M E S T.
Association of Science Teachers, Bristol County Science Teacher.
It's always great to see someone from our districts, you know, always being acknowledged. I want to say wow to Mr. Gore, who ran the five K at a very quick pace after not running it one in a very long time. But a real wow moment, I, I have to acknowledge because this is the committee joint, the Somerset Berkeley Education Foundation, they handed out many grants. I want to say, if I recall, Mr., is it the twenty-eight thousand or something?
About twenty-eight thousand.
About twenty-eight thousand to all three districts. Sincere thanks to that organization. I'm sure we all feel that way. And it's just great to see a group because that's really going to help a lot of our students, our programs. And I think because this is a joint meeting, it should be acknowledged at this meeting, so.
Okay, Mr. Shado. And I know before we adjourn, Sean, help me out with this. There's a ceremony for Veterans Day to celebrate our veterans?
Yeah, I think it's.
On Thursday, ten or eleven?
Yeah, from eleven.
If I'm right. So as a reminder for the veterans, thank you. While all business happens, when complete the K8 data, we're going to take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Gary, second by Mr. Shado. Is this a voice vote?
All, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In your post? Thank you.
On the regional side, we'll ask for a vote to give there.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, region. I see you.
Yeah, I, I, we should, we should just stay.